Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order, today being January 8th, 2019. We're starting a little bit late at 7:20. The meeting tonight is being recorded by the PBD School Committee's Recording Secretary, Joanne Brothers, who's here today on special assignment. The matter's listed on our agenda, those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. We are also being broadcast live on PAT. If everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. And now I'm gonna turn it over to our Superintendent Kara Mertag, who's gonna be introducing two of our best and brightest from the Carroll School today. Ms. Mertag?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing Logan and Madden Silver. They're eight-year-old twins in third grade at the Carroll School. Welcome Mom and Dad as well, and thank you, Mrs. Smith, for being here tonight. Logan has Miss Berry for a teacher, his favorite class is art, he loves to draw. Logan plays flag football, tackle football, and baseball. His favorite food is pizza. Madden has Mrs. Compi Bianco for a teacher. He loves playing sports in Mr. Levitt's gym class. Madden plays flag football, tackle football, baseball, and next year would like to try basketball. Madden loves to play Fortnite with his friends. The boys have a camper and love to travel with their family and friends each summer to different campgrounds. They love the different pools and to ride their bikes around the campground. Could you, boys, can you please come join Mayor Betancourt to say the pledge of allegiance
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of states, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Silver, and thank you, boys. Mrs. Smith, would you like to come up and speak about PBD gives? Carroll School has January PBD gives, and Mrs. Smith is going to explain what the district is going to be doing for the community service for the month of January.
Good evening, everybody. So, the Carroll School has January for our community event, and we have decided that we are going to ask all of the students and the staff in PBD to write either cards or positive notes to troops, and we're gonna send them off. So, we would love to include the school committee and maybe City Hall as well. And so, it could be a card or just a nice friendly positive note to our troops, and we'll box them all up and send them all out to all our troops overseas. So, we have a lot of families at Carroll that have either parents or brothers that have been deployed, so we thought it would be a nice way to give back to the community.
It is. That's terrific. Yeah, that is a wonderful way to...
So, the drive will run next week. We're really doing it next week until the 14th, and then we're asking the principals to have boxes at the school and ask all the classes and the staff to do it, and we could come around to City Hall, maybe you could do a box there, and people could just, whether it's just a note, or a card, or a letter, or anything they want to write, something positive, and we'll come pick 'em up, and then we'll box them all up, and we'll ship them out.
That's terrific. Yeah, City Hall's in, that's great.
Okay, great.
School committee's in.
Excellent. And the school system's in.
All right. Excellent. We're gonna have a lot of letters to send out. Yeah, so there's lots of programs that send them off, so we'll box them all up. There's "Support Our Troops" is one of them, so if we give them all to them, they'll see that they get to all of the troops, so, that are deployed overseas.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Sure. Have a good night.
If there's no objections, I'd like to go out of order. I'd like to go directly to the superintendent's report. We have a number of guests today, and I'd like to go to their items. There's no objection?
No objection.
Okay. Ms. Mertag, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, we have... Thank you all for being here tonight, and tonight I have the pleasure of introducing Maureen Donovan and Doreen, not Diane, Doreen Boucher, Biker Boucher, who have Science for Scientists come to the West School, and they're going to explain the program, and we also have a member from our high school here, and I also have a letter from one of the teachers from the Carroll School. So, if I can invite the two of you up, and then we'll... You come up, me, and then I'll read Bradley, a piece of Bradley Tattan's, "She Couldn't Be Here This Evening to Talk About Science for Scientists." They got those grants last time that you all approved, so...
Hi. So, we applied for and received a grant of $1,800 from the Self-Signaling Technology Small Grants Program, the Education and Science Grant Program, and it awards grants to science teachers and science departments from public elementary, middle, and high schools in several North Shore towns. So, the grant money has provided the opportunity for us to work with an organization called Science from Scientists. They are providing science fair support to both fourth-grade classes at the West, as well as providing help for us, the fourth-grade teachers, in running the science fair this year. The scientist assigned to our school has come to the West twice, and she's scheduled to come four more times from now through the end of February. The scientist has been working to help students understand the steps of the scientific method by using engaging, hands-on activities. She will be working with groups of students as they start working on their own science fair project to help guide them through the process as necessary. Based on our observations and student feedback from the science fair last year, which the fourth and fifth graders participated in together, we thought there was a need for students to have more explicit instruction in the scientific method, and to have additional opportunities for them to work through this process in a developmentally appropriate way before they actually begin work on their science fair projects. The science fair modules presented by Science from Scientists are aligned with the next-generation science standards, engineering design standards, as well as the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, with the science and engineering practices, asking questions and designing problems, planning, carrying out investigations, and constructing explanations.
The students so far have loved having the scientists come in. Their reaction to our scientist, who is Mrs. Jessica Costa, has been very positive. The students are very engaged in the activities when she's in the classroom. She's done a good job of making the activities student-centered. Students are all working with the same materials, but they're coming up with their own questions, testing their questions, and recording their results in ways that make sense to them, and then they share the results as a class. Students are looking forward to working on their own science fair projects, and Mrs. Costa has been a wonderful resource to us as teachers, always willing to give us feedback about our ideas and provide suggestions for activities, and answer any questions that have come up as we prepare to start the science fair projects with the kids.
The Science from Scientists program complements the Foss Science Program. In the Foss Science Program, the questions, materials, how to record data is all set up for the students, and the science fair requires the students to come up with their own question and decide how they're going to test it, what materials they need, how to record their own data, and how to communicate their data independently. So, the Science from Scientists activities have given students an opportunity to go through all these steps on their own with guidance and feedback provided by Mrs. Costa. And we feel that our students are in a good position to begin working on their own science fair projects, and we anticipate that they'll be starting that within the next week. We have found that Science from Scientists to be an extremely professional organization from my initial contact with them, with their help through the grant process, and their work with our students. There is an opportunity for our students to present work at MIT in early March, so we're hoping that we're able to get students to be able to do that. So, we're very happy with the program, and hopefully it can be expanded in other schools if that's possible.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, we, I remember last year, I think myself, a few of us, we went to, and it was Mrs. Tattan's class that I went to, was Science from Scientists, and I wanted to see, when you have the scientists, could you maybe let us know, and would you mind if maybe we sat in on a class or something? I would love to sit in. I really enjoyed... I really enjoyed it before, and I saw, like, there was definitely a glow in the kids' eyes, and there was definitely a lot of excitement there, and I'd love to maybe just sit in. I think some of the other members would as well. So, I know you have a few dates coming up. If you could maybe let us know, and I'd love to join and bring some more attention to that. And I really thank you for doing this work. This is terrific. Mr. Amico?
Sure. I just wanna, through the chair, I wanna thank you for bringing this forward, and I do know Ms. Costa, she's a former colleague of mine, and I had the pleasure of teaching summer school with her, right next door to her, and she always had the most engaging science lessons, and we would always look in, and "What is she doing next?" And so, you're very lucky to have her, and we're very lucky to have her, so, thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it. Great. Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mrs. Dunn?
I wanted to thank you both for your time for that event.
Yes.
And when you said the word that you had been awarded it, I was very curious of what it entailed and what you were gonna do, but this sounds absolutely fabulous, and I mean, I'm very, very happy to see what you're doing, and it's great that you reached out like that and handed all this to the students. I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, it's really been a big help for us as teachers, like, as you know, fourth grade is taking over the science fair this year, so we had a little anxiety about that, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
So, we thought having a professional help us would be a good thing, and as Doreen said, the students have really loved, loved working with Mrs. Costa, and they're very much looking forward to trying some things on their own.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. May, come over. Oh, good.
Great, yeah, please share.
Motion received.
Motion received by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. All in favor? That's a vote to approve.
Thank you for being here.
Okay. Senator, my name is May Taylor, I teach forensic science at the high school, and I also received the same grant from Self-Signaling. My grant was for the amount of $4,800, and it was for classroom materials. This year I have 110 students in my, in the forensic science program. That is a lot of students. Forensic science is a mostly lab-based class, so we do a lot of hands-on situations. So, a lot of the materials that I have purchased with the grant are all, most of them are reusable. So, these are things, we've got six mannequins, I've got different types of bones for their activity at the end of the year with the bones. So, we have a lot of things that we can use to set up for the crime scenes, and we also have a partnership with the PBD Police Department, so they come in and they do the simulated crime scenes with my students.
Wow.
So, now we just have the material that's available for that, and some of the pictures that I have are actually from, we had Lieutenant Cook came in, he set up a crime scene at the beginning of the year, and he taught the students how, it was very cold outside. He taught them how to properly lift fingerprints off of different types of surfaces. Officer Ritchie came in, they brought the SWAT team dog, Anne Claude, who was everybody's favorite. So, they came in for the day, members of the SWAT team came in, and they went through an entire day with all of my classes, talking about their experiences with the investigation and the marathon bombings. So, they were all involved in the investigation. So, we had a forensic sketch artist that's come in from the FBI and did some work with my students. So, I do a lot of hands-on things with them. With that comes a lot of material.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Because I'd like to attend that class, too.
I might have more fun than they do sometimes. So, with every, this is my fourth year teaching, and with every year I try to do something a little bit different, so they're not all getting the same experience. We did a field trip to the Gardner Museum two years ago, where they had to profile the crime scene of the art heist, and they presented their work at the art show at the end of the year for that. So, very cool. Fun, it's great.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any questions, or...
So, one of the pictures in there is actually of the material that I did receive from the grant. There's still some stuff that's on back order, but all of that just came in on Friday, so...
This sketch artist looks a lot like Mr. Amico, by the way. I was wondering.
So, we're gonna continue our partnership with the PBD Police Department, and we have guest speakers that come in. I have at least five students that I know of that are actively in careers right now, working towards, whether it be law enforcement or forensic science, that are all in college right now doing that.
These are great. Thank you. These are great.
And I, hopefully, I put in a request for forensics two next year, so hopefully we can keep it going.
110 students, how many classes is that? Five classes, 110 students? Okay.
And one of them, so, if you see the picture with all of them with their folders, I broke them up into crime scene teams, and that's their teams for the year. Everybody has a job for the year. So, when we go into our crime scenes, they already know what, one's a photographer, one's an evidence collector, one is gonna be in charge, is like the lieutenant. And I make badges for them every year with all their pictures on them, that they have to wear into the crime scenes.
That's great.
Which I forgot to bring.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much for being here. This is great.
Thank you, May. Ms. Tattan was also a recipient. Thank you, May. Ms. Bradley Tattan, a third-grade teacher at the Carroll School, she used to be a fourth-grade teacher at the Carroll School, but she's third grade this year, and she was in receipt of a $7,500 science, well, what is it called? I'm sorry. Self-Signaling Techno, From Self-Signaling Technology for Science for Scientists. Ms. Tattan has received a grant since 2015 all the way through now, so, Science for Scientists has been at the Carroll School for quite some time. So, the mission statement of the program is to teach and inspire the next generation to identify and solve real-world problems by improving STEM literacy. Ms. Tattan wrote a beautiful thing, I'm going to highlight some of the areas in which she honed in on. Each year the Science Teacher Partnership develops hands-on lessons and activities that support both the Foss curriculum and the Mass State science standards. Authentic, professional scientists with advanced experience in STEM visit approximately every other week to present a new curriculum-related concept. Lessons are designed to promote inquiry and discussion-based learning in small group settings. The scientists bring with them all the necessary tools and lab equipment to support and engage students in the metacognitive thinking, experimentation, and excitement of discovery. So, I want to thank Ms. Tattan for her hard work in writing this grant, and also having them come in and engage our students in hands-on science activities. So, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight to explain the grant that you received.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Higgins is here tonight from the South School for the Use of ExxonMobil Holden Oil Award, so if you could come and explain the award, Dr. Higgins, that would be great.
Good evening, everyone. At the South School, we're very grateful to have received a $500 grant from ExxonMobil Education Alliance. Chuck Holden, the owner of Holden Oil, who I know a lot of us are familiar with, a great friend of the South School, he applied for that grant on our behalf. I also want to note that last year we actually received two grants totaling $1,000, so for the last two school years, we've had $1,500 to apply towards some of our science initiatives, so I want to publicly thank Chuck for his work for that. So, a couple of the main things we've been able to do, some of my colleagues mentioned the work with the science fair, so last year with the science fair, we had over 130 students in the two grades participate, and so a lot of the materials that they would need, that typically may have come in from home, in the traditional science fair, we were providing at the school level, so we had a lot of materials that we supported them with. But more importantly, the second initiative in collaboration with our PTO, our PTO does a wonderful job bringing enrichment programs to the school, and so what we really concentrated on, and this grant really went towards, is each grade level having, it's almost a reverse field trip. We bring the field trip to the school as opposed to going somewhere. So, with the Museum of Science, we partnered, and each grade level has a specific field trip more aligned to their curriculum. Classroom gets to go down for about an hour in the gym, really hands-on, finds with fossils, electromagnetism, solar power, things of that nature, so depending on the grade level and the interest, we provide those programs, and so these kind of grants allow us to do this. And again, our PTO, I really want to make sure I emphasize as well, so having these really hands-on, engaging programs at each grade level specifically has been wonderful. So, this, grants like this go a really a long way, so we're very appreciative of that.
Great. Great. Any questions or thoughts?
I don't have any bones or anything. I can show you. And I don't think I'm gonna be invited to MIT anytime soon, but other than that, we're pretty happy with what we have. I drove by there a couple times, but they didn't let me in.
Well, Dr. Higgins, thank you. Any questions or comments? Great. Yeah, Mrs. Dunn?
Thanks, Dr. Higgins. It's actually really very nice to be up there and staying at the South School. We have children who have been born out of that building, but they have really good neighbors, and it's nice to see them helping you and folks being here.
Absolutely. In fact, I was their fifth-grade math teacher many, many years ago, so I can appreciate that. They have, they've been away from the school for a long time, but they've been great to us, so it is great, and it's a great community there, so we're very appreciative.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico?
Through the chair, Dr. Higgins, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you to the Holden family, and good luck to them as they're renovating their facilities there, and I'm sure it'll look great, and I'm sure they'll continue to do great things for our city, so I just wanted to personally thank them as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Higgins.
Thank you very much.
The next person I would like to invite is Mr. Hanley from the PBD Elks, and the PBD Elks donates a dictionary to each third grader, so, Mr. Hanley, please come forth.
My name is Joe Hanley, I'm from the PBD Linn Lodge of Elks. We started this program 12 or 14 years ago. We were at a state regional meeting, and the state president, one little paragraph, "We're gonna start a new program called dictionaries." So, after the meeting, I went up to him, brought the information. The following day, Monday, I went to the superintendent of the schools at that time, asked them if they were interested in this kind of a program, and she jumped on board right away, and we've been doing it ever since. On another note, PBD was the first school system in the state of Massachusetts to accept this program, so I want to thank you guys for that. And the idea of giving the dictionary to third graders with today's day and age with all electronics, when we first started it, I really didn't think it was gonna go, but to see the excitement on the kids' faces, I mean, you have to be there to really see what goes on. So, maybe sometime in the future, if somebody from the committee could come and just see one class, you'll understand what we're talking about.
When do you typically do it?
Pardon me?
When do you typically give the dictionaries out? Is it a certain time of the year, or...
I try to get it as early in the year as I can, so they can all have it at the same time, but it depends on the grant money when we get it in.
Sure. That makes sense.
How much it takes to get the dictionaries from South Carolina.
Well, that is a terrific gesture from the Elks, and I know that does make a difference to our students. That's wonderful. I even thought it was longer than that. It's been about 12, 13 years?
Yeah, I think it's 14, I'm not sure. I have to go back on my history.
Yeah, that's great. Great. Any questions for Mr. Hanley, or thoughts? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Carpenter?
Through the chair. Mr. Hanley, I just want to say thank you. I have three of those dictionaries in my home, and I have to tell you exactly what you said, with today's day and age with technology, it's still great. All three of my kids came home extremely excited that they had a book of all of the words in the world, and it was, it was fun, you know, teaching them how to look them up, and the process of going through a dictionary, and we still have all three of them, their names are inside with your stickers, and I just want to say thank you, because they were, each one of them was very excited to receive it. Thank you.
And they do update them every year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hanley, thank you for coming to talk to us tonight. This is a great program. The Elks is one of the many civic organizations and groups in the city of PBD that supports our youth. The Elks, in addition to providing dictionaries to our third graders for the last 14 or so years, made an unsolicited contribution to No Child Goes Hungry. Got a phone call from them, I think it was in October of this year, and they were able to provide us with a scholarship that is being used to help feed kids as well, so you guys do a great job, and we appreciate it, so thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley, and they will be put to good use. The next person I'd like to introduce is Mr. Collins, Mr. Dan Collins. Mr. Collins is a parent as well as, he works for New York Life, and I want to thank you and your company for your generosity.
You're welcome. So, I wanted to take the opportunity to accept the invitation to come here and personally accept the thank you, but I wanted to return it and say, you know, thank you to the school committee for all the time that you put in for our kids. The efforts I wanted to do with my company was, you know, to help out Mr. Buckley at the high school, and just take this opportunity to say that, you know, I have three kids in the school system, one at the Higgins, and two at the high school, and they've gotten phenomenal educations, and Mr. Buckley and his staff. You know, my wife and I are thrilled at what the experience that they have education-wise, and what they're getting out of it, and so thankful. So, that's pretty much, I wanted to make sure I took the opportunity to thank, you know, all the teachers my kids have had over the years.
Great. Well, I just wanted to say, Mr. Collins, that all of us have been very appreciative of what you've done for us, and I don't know if you've seen the meetings, but we've been very complimentary towards you and New York Life, which is an outstanding company, but I just wanted to say, you know, you and I have been lifelong friends, and it's people like you that I think make the city special. I don't think people realize the different, the impact you've had on our community in so many different ways. You started the whole girls' lacrosse program, which has really built up tremendously for our city. You started that along with Ed Lamazny, and you've coached many, many teams over the years. I know you've done a lot over at the South School and different schools across the city, so, and I just want to personally thank you, and I think all of us want to thank you. You're, you're one of those quiet, behind-the-scenes guys that really make...
I mean, I didn't want to, I wanted to come, but I felt like...
No, I know, but this, no, but it is, and I know you don't, you're not enjoying this. I know that. I know that. But it is important to be, it is important to be recognized, and also for your company to be recognized as well, New York Life.
No, believe me, I think Eric and his staff up there is awesome, so I'm gonna look for other opportunities to keep, try to help out, and, you know, so that's...
Great, keep the checks coming. Any other... Mr. Olympia?
Now, Mr. Collins, thank you so much for your support and your generosity really over the years, and the mayor said it perfectly, you do a lot of stuff behind the scenes without any fanfare, without the cameras around, and I know I appreciate it, and everyone on this committee does, and it's really...
You're welcome. I enjoy it.
People like you, you know, in the city are just extremely special, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a great city. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Mrs. Carpenter?
Through the chair. Welcome, Mr. Collins. I just want to say how much we all appreciate the checks that you keep sending in. You know, I think tonight, the whole first part of this meeting has been about all of the wonderful monetary donations that our district has received, the grants that we just heard about, and the dictionaries, and your checks, I'll tell you, every time I look through the packet, and, you know, I see donations, and they're all wonderful, but it's week after week after week you're sending them in, and it's just like, "Oh, we sent in another one." It's just wonderful. I appreciate it so much. You know, your family is wonderful, I know, you know, most of your family, and I just want to thank you so much, and this is just another example of just how great, you know, the people and charity here in PBD, and all of the donations that we're receiving, and just all night, is there anybody else here giving us money? I mean, we've gotten a lot of money tonight.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. Danny, if I may.
Yeah.
We all know you very well, and, you know, you were one of the founders, or first volunteers in the box program when we started that up. You were right there at the South School, giving your time before you went to work, helping kids, and that's who you are. The money's nice. I appreciate seeing the donations, but I really appreciate you being around our kids. You know, it's your attitude, it's your philosophy, it's your temperament and personality that really does instill PBD pride in kids, starting from elementary school and up. You really have, you and Eddie, have really taken a bunch of girls who never saw lacrosse stick, you know, never, you know, running clinics at the old Higgins fields, and taking your time in the rain and a whole bunch of bad weather, and really invigorating young girls in PBD. I have three daughters, as you know, and getting them involved in athletics, and having pride in themselves and self-confidence, and all of the wonderful things that come from your investment in them. You know, that's, that's who you are, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well said, Charlie. Thanks, Dan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Have a nice night.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, we'll go back to the regular agenda. Approval of minutes, we have minutes from December 11, 2018, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call vote on approval of minutes. Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, it's a six vote, six to zero to approve, and we'll go to approval of bills, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 4047, dated January 8th, 2019, in the amount of $1,350,665.67, subject to audit.
Second.
Great, you've heard the motion for approval of warrant A, number 4047, by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote on the motion. Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 4050, dated January 8th, 2019, the amount of $133,947.17, subject to audit.
Second.
Further motion for approval of warrant B, number 4050, made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote. Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. Thank you.
Both unanimous votes, thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Continued business, Mrs. Dunn, anything to report on the MSBA Higgins project?
Very quickly, the December, I'm sorry, the December Higgins School Building Committee meeting was, took place on December 20th, and it consisted basically of a wrap-up of information for the final stages of the process to close out the Higgins project with the MSBA. We'll be working on a landscape maintenance plan over the next few months, and the next meeting will be March 21st. For the first time since December, I'm sorry, since February 16th of 2012, Higgins School Building Committee has been meeting once a month, and for 2013, 2014, and 2015, we met twice a month. And so, this March will be the next meeting, we're going to take off January and February, and you can really tell that the project is truly coming, coming to a finalization. And it's been a pleasure, the people who've worked on that have been great, we had, we had a lot of fun at that last meeting, just chatting about different things to be done, and we are still ready to finish the work. Again, that maintenance, landscape maintenance plan will be ready March, probably April, just in time for the grass to come up and everybody to chime in on how to take care of it. So, we will be prepared if we ever did need to have another meeting between now and March, of course, we would meet, but it seems like we can actually take off those two months.
No, that makes sense, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, and we'll be able to transition now into the wealth school.
Yes.
School building committee, so that'll be the next...
That's right, we're ready to help you on that one.
That'll be the next exciting project for our city. Great, thank you. The other item on continued business is the school start time surveys. Anything new on that? Anyone want to discuss?
Yes.
Motion to receive.
Okay, we've got a document, current school start and dismissal times. Mr. Hockman, motion to receive by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Olympio.
This was the question, is this just from what, in the back of the room? Do you want me to talk for a second?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Murtagh, to talk about this document.
Okay. In, at last school committee meeting, we decided that we're going to make a rolling list of items that we'd like to take a look at, and Mr. LaFleur and Ms. Connors from Transportation have taken a look, and each, each time, we'll be doing a little bit more. There are other things that are going to take longer, and have a longer discussion, but here are the current school start times and dismissal times, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. LaFleur to explain what's in front of you.
We put this together to highlight some of the factors that we're considering, and this is really just transportation-based at this point. So, that first section is the current school start and dismissal times by tier. So, you can see the length of the day starts out, at the high school, it's six hours and 35 minutes, and by the time we get to elementarys, it's six hours and five minutes. So, that is a factor in considering which order these schools open up during the day. The next little section, I highlighted the, the available time between those tiers. So, if I look at the run tiers, from the high school to the Higgins School in the middle, we have a full hour. Then going on to elementary run, it's only 35 minutes. In the afternoon, it's, it's a little bit shorter because of the length of the day at the high school, so we only have 40 minutes between dismissal from the high school to Higgins, and then only 25 when we get to the third tier with the elementary. So, you can see that the, the length of the day has a huge impact here. So, we've reviewed all of the bus runs, I've got all the data from Healy Bus Company and our own internal runs, and we've gone through these, and this is what we get. In the morning, we actually have time, we could make this work if it was just the morning as a factor. I generally have the buses sitting for 38 minutes on average between that first run with, with the high school and the second run with Higgins, and then only seven minutes on the third tier before they start the pickups for the elementarys. The length of the day, however, impacts the PM runs dramatically. There's no time between any runs. So, when we have traffic issues or seasonality, like the Halloween period or Christmas shopping near the malls, buses are running late. And we were asked about looking at bus stops, a number of stops per run, and I put the averages here. At the high school, we only stopped five times, average per bus, Higgins, eight, and the elementary, or 9.5. So, that being said, we're not stopping very often, so consolidation's a little tough, and I'll give you one example. At Brooksbury Farm, we have quite a substantial subdivision up there, we're only stopping twice, one on each end, one on Cortland and one on Page. So, the students are walking already, so we're going through there and not stopping four or five times with the ability to consolidate a little bit. So, again, we've looked at this from the transportation standpoint only, there's other factors we need to look at, and the superintendents intend us to form a study group here shortly after our implementation of Aspen's complete. We, we'll have more tools to look at school scheduling and other factors that will address this topic.
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Any questions, comments, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. LaFleur, for putting this together, and thank everyone who assisted you with putting this together. Not to, I guess maybe we'll hit two of my areas of concern at the same time. If we extended the school day so that everybody was in school for six hours and 35 minutes, could it alleviate the transportation problem that exists in the PM as you've identified with going through this research?
Absolutely. My problem is, is in the afternoon.
Thank you.
That would push it out.
Thank you.
Right. Mrs. Dunn?
I want to say thank you for, for generating this report and looking into these. Actually, it's very, it really is interesting, and it's an eye-opener to see that difference between morning and afternoon, and this is very important information for us, and I thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Doc.
Yep, yeah, let's go to, well, let's go, public participation, is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? The microphone is open. Seeing no one, there's no objection, I'd like to go back to the organizational meeting that we were supposed to start off tonight's meetings with. First item would be call to order. Mr. Amico made a motion to call to order the meeting of the organizational meeting, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter, all in favor. That's a vote. Next item is adoption of bylaws.
Motion to...
Motion to approve those bylaws, made by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote on that, please.
On the motion, if I can?
Yeah, on the motion.
Yeah. I do believe that it, we, we're going to have a vote on these bylaws, and I think we're going to adopt them tonight, and we do need to review them, I think, at some point. There are some antiquated aspects to them, so I just want to bring that up, and maybe we can take that up in the next couple of months.
Great, I agree, thank you. Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, next is the voting order. So, we have a item here, and I just want to make sure it's...
One.
Is that one, two, three, four, five, six? All right, Mr. Amico, go in alphabetical order.
I get comfortable.
Can we just do like a full clock from last year?
I pulled two of them.
Pick which one you want. Which one do you want?
You definitely took two little bouncy balls in there, right? Number four.
Number four, so that's over there. All right, Mr. Arnotis?
Alphabetical order.
Alphabetical.
Mr. Arnotis?
I can't move, I have to put it next to the business unit, it was a good spot.
Yeah, I'm not moving.
Number five, same spot.
Wow!
Who would be next, Mrs. Carpenter?
I'm leaving my mic.
Oh, yeah.
Number two.
Number two. Mrs. Dunn? Yeah.
She'd be next to the money guy. Now, I can see the door.
Yay!
Oh, same spot.
Six.
Six.
Oh, good, perfect. We liked you there, bud.
I think there's one and three available, hopefully, that comes up that way.
You want a couple coins?
Number one.
Ah.
Do I have to come up and make it official?
Make it official.
That number, the right number is in there?
Yeah, that's all we did. We traded...
That looks like a three.
All right.
High-tech, he did it.
We did, that was high-tech. All right, so we have our seat assignments, our voting order this year. Mr. Hockman is in the first seat, Mrs. Carpenter in the second seat, Mr. Olympio in the third seat, Mr. Amico in the fourth seat, and again, Mr. Arnotis and Mrs. Dunn in the fifth and sixth seats. We have now the election of the vice chair. Is there any nominations for the position of vice chairperson for the 2019 year? Mrs. Dunn?
Mr. Chairman, it would give me great pleasure to put into nomination the name of Andrew Peter Arnotis, to serve as our vice chair for the coming year.
Second. Further motion made by Mrs. Dunn for the appointment of Mr. Arnotis as the vice chair, seconded by Mr. Olympio. On the motion, roll call vote, Mr. Hockman?
I'm proud to make my first vote in seat number one for Andrew P. Arnotis.
Excellent. Mrs. Carpenter?
Andrew Peter Arnotis.
Mr. Olympio?
Andrew Peter Arnotis.
Mr. Amico?
Andrew Peter Arnotis.
Mr. Arnotis?
President.
Mrs. Dunn?
Andrew Peter Arnotis.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Arnotis.
Thank you very much.
And now, for the always coveted secretary of the school committee for 2019, are there any nominations to be made?
I am proud to make Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn.
And I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Arnotis, seconded by Mr. Olympio, to appoint Mrs. Dunn as the secretary, no other nominations. Roll call vote. Mr. Hockman?
Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio?
Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn.
Mr. Amico?
Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn.
Mr. Arnotis?
Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn.
Mrs. Dunn?
President.
Great, well, thank you for taking on those leadership roles, yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back now, this, some remaining items under the superintendent's report. Ms. Murtagh, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two donations for your approval tonight, the donation of $75 from Ludares Environmental to the PBD Public Schools.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Carpenter for acceptance, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote. Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
He doesn't like that number one seat. Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
He doesn't like a seat.
The second donation is from the PBD House Residents Council. They made beautiful hats and mittens for the holiday season and for the winter months for us students.
Motion to receive with gratitude?
Second.
Further motion by Mrs. Dunn for acceptance, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. All in favor? That's a vote for approval, thank you.
Thank you. In your packet tonight, you have a draft of the 2019, 2020 school year working calendar. So, we did it this way, so we could make any changes, or you can let us know of any changes that you may have, and then we will go back into the other format once it is finalized by the committee.
Question on the calendar?
Yes.
Through the chair. Ms. Murtagh, in regards to the first day that students report?
Yes.
I know that we have language in the contract, does that first day follow that language?
I will double-check, but I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I think it's something about if Labor Day falls on the Monday after, there was some type of language, I just want to double-check on that.
I believe we checked, but I will triple-check, yes.
Okay, can we put this on again, so that we can have some time to look at it, and then...
Sure.
Yeah, we'll put this back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Continue business.
Okay. Thank you, I know it takes a little time, and...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. This is just, Aspen is going to be our new student informations system, and in the upcoming weeks, you'll be receiving information that will be disseminated to you all, to students, as well as to the parents, about how we're going to change over from our current system to our new system that is high-quality, and we're really, really excited about moving forward with that. I'd like to thank my entire team, Dr. Lord, and Maria Shambos, and Sandra Decunha, and all of the principals, and all of the trainers, train the trainer model, that have really worked diligently to get this up and running. So, thank you. The next thing here is school improvement plans. So, I meet bi-weekly with the leadership team, and one thing that I want to bring to you to think about, and it doesn't have to be voted on tonight, but something to think about, is that we were looking at the school improvement plans, which really drives, we're going to hopefully have a district strategic plan by the end of the school year, and that will drive our school improvement plans, that will, it's like a snowball effect that should drive the entire district in each individual school. So, the improvement plans, we usually present this current year's school improvement plan in March. However, we were talking and discussing this, that our goals and our data from the state do not come in until usually late August, early September, and October, and we would like to see if we could present budgetary items in the spring, and present our school our school improvement plan that we're going to be working on for the entire school year from September to June, and present in the October-November meetings of the fall of 2019. So I just want you to think about that, because it's the current students sitting in front of us, it's the current goals that we'll be working on, and it's the current budget that we'll be utilizing to move forward.
On that topic, Mr. Miko?
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. For the motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Any thoughts or comments? Mrs. Dunn?
I actually think it does make sense for us to be able to hear a concentrated presentation from each school concerning budgetary matters. The way we've done it in the past few years, it's more of a, you know, an MCAS analysis, curriculum analysis, which is all very important for our budget discussion. But I can understand wanting to break that apart. They'll still be really tied together. But I think it might help us to be able to focus on the budgetary considerations that we need to make and be able to use some of... We'll always use the continuing data. We'll always be using that. But over the years, seeing the change in the school improvement plans has... They have definitely changed over the years, and I think that the need of hearing from the schools as far as their budgets is very important during that budget discussion. Hearing it at the beginning of the process is helpful, at least I know... I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think it's very helpful to me as a school committee member, and I think it's helpful to everyone, knowing what to keep in mind when we're going through. If a school gave us a specific need, we want to make sure that we're, if we can, we're able to provide that. So I can see the need to split them. I do think they have to be, as a document, they do have to be... I don't want to say the word "bound," but you do have to have that school improvement document on hand, completed, for anyone who wants to refer to it. So I think we would need to work out some details on how to do this, but I do understand as far as the discussions dividing it a bit.
We have a motion on the floor. Let's do a roll call vote, please. Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Arnottis? Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. It's a vote.
Thank you very much for that. I think we'll be able to see progression. So thank you. Oh, on January 31st, we discussed in... At our previous school committee meetings, that I would like to have a professional development day for us, and on January 31st, Dorothy Presser from the Mass Association of School Committee will be doing a professional development with the school committee and myself from six to eight. And location to be determined.
Thank you.
On January 23rd, the statewide system, there's many of us involved in the support regional meetings, and they asked if we could hold one here. We're actually going to have it here at the Higgins, and I will be involved in that, but just making you it, just for information for you, that some of the other districts that are working on some of the same things are going to have a regional meeting here with me and at the state. So the day after we came back from Thanksgiving break, the West School unfortunately had a transformer down, and we didn't have electricity and heat. And so we have to do that make-up day, and we would like to... I will send out a note to parents and speak to the building principal, as I spoke to the Department of Education, and we have to fulfill the 180 days of school. So they'll have to make up that day. So I'll be sending a notice home so parents can... And teachers and people can prepare for that. Just want to bring that forward. Student Government Day winners, in your packet, there are all the students that ran for the positions, citywide and schoolwide. We met our counterparts today. We had a wonderful experience with them today, and we look forward to April 11th, the Student Government Day, which students are actually going to be able to work with us and see what we do on a daily basis. Looking forward to that. In your packet, you also have... I met with ROTC up at the high school, and they have started a newsletter, and I wanted you to see what the students and Major Rugo and Sergeant Perez have put together, the Tanner Squadron Newsletter. So please enjoy that and everything that they are doing in the community, as well as up at PBD High School.
Oh, sorry. On that topic, Mrs. Dunn?
Sorry. Thank you. Superintendent Murtagh, thank you very much for providing this to us. This was really interesting. It's nice to see a lot of the things that the JROTC does at the high school. And, you know, we see them at a lot of events and really anticipate them as representatives of the student body, but also of, you know, patriotism. And it's a great group. It's a great group of kids. It's a great program. They learn so much from that. And one of the best lessons for the JROTC program is the leadership component. And many of these students, some plan to go on to military careers, some don't, but they all get military... I'm sorry, they all get leadership training. And knowing some of those students, it's nice to see how they grow from freshmen to seniors and take on leadership roles and become really just so much more self-assured and get some self-confidence. I would actually be interested if you could, if we could find out if they have such a record of how many of our students from the JROTC program end up going into the military and making a career out of it. I would be interested, because I know that they get a very good start in this program, and a lot of them go on to get JROTC scholarship... I'm sorry, ROTC scholarships, which are very difficult to get. But if you get an ROTC scholarship, you end up having unbelievable financial support when you go off to college. It's really a very, very special program. So if we could get some more details and actually find out, you know, just what some of the students did after they graduated, how did JROTC help them, I would be interested. And I think everybody probably would be.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dunn. How many years would you like me to go back?
I don't know. Maybe if we could go back eight? That would give us... Yeah, maybe eight, but whatever they could provide. I have no idea what type of records they keep or how they figure that out. I don't know if it's through guidance, when they do those follow-up surveys, or it's just the knowledge of Major Rugo. But it's the military. They've got data.
I will research it and give it back to you.
Find something. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final thing in my report is, this year, we are doing the science fairs in the winter months where we teach physical science. So they're going to be in February, in one, and on March 1st. And but we still are going to have the ceremony in the spring.
Question?
Yes.
Through the chair. So this year is when... Last year is when we had both fourth and fifth, because we were flipping, right?
Correct. Transitioning.
Transitioning. So it's just the one grade this?
Just fourth grade this year. The standards have moved from fifth grade to fourth grade. So last year was our transition year. So this year, fourth grade has... Fourth grade teachers and students are going to be doing the science fairs.
Just fourth grade? Okay.
Yes. Thank you. And that's it for my report. Thank you. Ooh, sorry. Ooh, sorry. Forgot that. We already did the PBD House Residence Council. And one final thing is the student attendance report that's provided in your packet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Murtagh, for that report. A lot of items there. Thank you.
One other question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Dunn?
In addition to the student report, is there any word on when we'll be getting the teacher attendance report?
We're thinking once we have... Once we have Aspen up and running, it will be more user-friendly, and we will be able to provide that to you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a couple of written communications, three in fact. First one is communication from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services regarding the 2019 Massachusetts Youth Health Survey, of which PBD was chosen or selected to participate. Second item is the 2018 NEC Annual Report. And that's the North Shore Education Consortium. And the third written communication is communication from the PBD Federation of Teachers and the PBD Administrators Association regarding a resolution in support of full funding for our public schools. And I believe they're looking for a vote on that item. Mr. Arnottis on...
On the third item.
Third item, is there any comments on the first and second item?
Just a motion to receive the first and second items.
Okay, we've made a motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Arnottis, to receive written communication one and two. Second, and that was unanimous vote. The third item, Mr. Arnottis, I'll turn it over to you.
Motion to receive the third.
No, I was actually... If I may, through you.
Please.
I'm just going to, as an employee of the legislature, and I'm going to recuse myself from that vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arnottis. So we have written communication number three. Would anybody like to speak to that or address that? I think the PBD Federation of Teachers and the PBD Administrators Association is looking for the school committee to take some action. Mrs. Dunn?
Motion to receive for purposes of discussion.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Dunn to receive for purposes of discussion, seconded by Mr. Olympio. All in favor? It's a vote. Mrs. Dunn?
And on the motion, what I would like to ask is if it would be possible to put it on to next... Our next meeting. And I'll tell you why. This weekend was a... It's called the President's Retreat of the Board of Directors of the MAS C. And there is a lot going on regarding funding, as you all know. This evening, there's a meeting... There are three meetings across the state being sponsored by the Mass Association of School Superintendents regarding the funding issue. There is a potential lawsuit being filed by various school districts in the state, much in the line of the Duffy and the Hancock cases. And there's some more information coming in within the next couple of days of where we would stand. We may want to add... I might want to add to the resolution if we have some more detailed information for you. So if we could hold off just for two weeks and see what comes out of the progress that the Association of School Superintendents is trying to make, as well as Mass Association of School Committees, they're all working in conjunction with the unions. And there's a lot of philosophical discussion going on about the best way to proceed as far as obtaining equitable funding. Everyone knows it's a huge issue, but it is a real double-edged sword in a lot of respects.
I think that's a good suggestion, Mrs. Dunn. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
We will hold it to the next committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports. I do apologize, I did not bring the new subcommittee assignments. I will have those for the next meeting. There were a couple of adjustments, but for the most part, they were very similar. But I will have that for the next meeting. Is there anyone that would like to make a subcommittee report on... At this time, or should we hold all those to the next meeting? Any reports to be made? Why don't we hold those to the next committee meeting? And I will get those... I will get the assignments prior to the school committee meeting.
Oh.
Mrs. Dunn?
On quality and standards, I would like to refer a Section B to the Quality and Standards Subcommittee for Review. Section B of our bylaws, of our... I'm sorry, our policy manual for an update. So moved.
Heard Mrs. Dunn's motion, seconded by Mr. Miko. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Okay, new business, MAS C updates. Mrs. Dunn, I'd like to make a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to let everyone know, some of the work of MAS C, and I thank you for giving me some time to speak about it, as I just spoke on the issue of the potential pending lawsuit and the legislative work being done to try to obtain adequate funding for the schools. MAS C is also doing some special work, and you'll see the difference. They're going to really... We're really working hard to get the word out about the fine work of school committees and actually what MAS C does. School committee members are the only trained elected officials in the state of Massachusetts. Our training is mandatory, and we are the only ones who take that training. MAS C provides that training and provides all the supports to us that we need with all kinds... The Governance Project, which Dorothy Presser will be coming out to help us with. They prepared a video, and I will have it for our next meeting, if you'd like to see it. It's actually very interesting. It's going to be part of a push to let the public understand what school committees do for their community and for the schoolchildren in Massachusetts. Massachusetts is number one in the country. Many members of the MAS C board serve as representatives on the National School Board